And the, uh, one of the neighbors is afraid that, you know,
Too many cars, yeah.
And not enough parking spots, and he disagrees, and so... The word is, we don't feel there's a parking issue.
I'd like to call the meeting to order. I'm sorry, Mr. Stewart, we called it to order before you got in.
[laughing]
No, he's not listening to me.
[laughing]
Okay, any citizens, public comments? We're limited to five minutes. Any public comments want to be made? Did you want to say something, sir? Did you want to address the council? Okay. Uh, mayor's welcome, welcome. Uh, consider approval of the agenda.
So moved, your honor.
Second.
No call?
Starr.
Aye.
Jaeger.
Aye.
Friesman.
Aye.
Hammond.
Aye.
Malero.
Aye.
Consider approval of the minutes of the August 3 and August 12 meetings. Any discussion?
So moved.
Second.
No call?
Jaeger.
Aye.
Friesman.
Aye.
Hammond.
Aye.
Malero.
Aye.
Starr.
Aye.
Item number six, consider approval of the consent calendar. You can see what's on the consent calendar. I must mention on item one or I there that, uh, we're seeing a rebound on the public health plan, rebound of our resources, so that's good. Any other comments on the consent calendar?
So moved.
Second.
No call?
Friesman.
Aye.
Hammond.
Aye.
Malero.
Aye.
Starr.
Aye.
Jaeger.
Aye. The mayor has no business, the mayor's in Europe, so let's address it from there. Uh, item number seven, petitions, public hearings, communications. We have nothing under that one, right?
Correct.
Okay, number nine, ordinance and resolutions. Item A, consider the first reading of ordinance 1086 amending the zoning ordinance of the city of Charles City to change the classification of a parcel of real estate from R2 to general residence district, R2 general residence district to B2 general business district. Any discussion?
There is information in front of you that Laurie Stewart brought in this afternoon that's in this packet here.
Okay.
So if you need to take a peek at that, um, I don't know if they're going to get up and speak at any time or not, but that is from them.
Okay, and I will say on that, because as you know, I'm pretty involved in the Starr home, and I will abstain from any vote on that, on this issue, because, because of my presence. Stewart, do you have anything to comment?
Um, good evening, council. Uh, I'm Dean Stewart. I'm the owner and broker of Stewart Realty Company in Charles City. Uh, not too many months ago, about two and a half months ago or so, um, the former Starr home in Charles City was listed with Stewart Realty Company. Um, at that time, and even prior to, uh, the inception of that listing, it was apparent that zoning on the parcel would likely either need to be changed and extend the B2 district, which is just immediately abutting it to the north and the northwesterly of the subject parcel. Um, so changing it from an R2 to likely B2, just an extension of an existing district. And if that wasn't the case, and in those kinds of conversations with John and with the city, and then Ralph Smith, where a likely zoning change would be in order. Um, an alternate, um, process for settling or looking at this real estate for potential uses, um, beyond, beyond the use that it had, would have been a special use. And it was from those initial discussions that a likely zoning change would be, um, the most likely course of action, and that's proved true today. Uh, the parcel was listed, is listed, marketed. Uh, of the uses that prospective purchasers envisioned their use of the building, consistently they were in a business use and not a residential use. Ideally, we'd like to have the former Starr home there. That's not viable today. Uh, through that marketing process, the Starr home, um, board did reach an agreement for the sale of the property. The use of that property would now be for professional offices. You could have a professional office as a special use in an R2, ideally for cities zoning and compliance, maybe not the best course of action to put that use in a residential district. Again, through conversations with the city attorney Smith, and then obviously with the purchaser Dennis Donovan, it was determined that a B2 zone change would be best, um, moving forward for professional office use of the building. And that's the course that it did go on. Petition was filed with planning and zoning. I believe they unanimously approved a B2 change in recommendation to, uh, this entity, and now we're in the final stages of getting the, I think it's a three council process reading, uh, to a change of B2. So, on behalf of Stewart Realty, the Starr home and Dennis Donovan, we respectfully request the approval for a B2 zone change on the subject property.
Any questions of Dean?
Don't have anything for Dean, but John, um, is this the same district that we're going to with the, uh, property up on, uh, North Grand there? That the insurance office is going into?
Well, it's not the same zoning. Um, what, uh, Dean mentioned, uh, we went through this in the, uh, Planning and Zoning Commission, they did meet, they held their public hearing on this matter after August 4th, commission meeting, and they did, um, recommend this, uh, change in zone. Um, actually, there's actually a number of zoning districts that kind of combine right at this intersection, so this change fits the area well.
Yes, that's what I was thinking, it's real similar to the building that, uh, Shankland Dix Insurance is going into. That's what I'm trying to give you.
Exactly, yeah. Likewise, because that was a, at a conjunction of a number of different zoning districts, and this is the same situation.
Same situation. That's what I thought.
And I think, Delane, I think you were in and around, uh, manufacturing residential and B3s on that north area, but this does about a B2, so, yeah.
Any other questions, discussions?
I would so move.
Second.
Thank you, thank you, Dean. Thank you for making presentation, saved a lot of time, but if Laurie would have made it.
Thanks, Dean.
Uh, we have a roll call?
Hammond.
Aye.
Malero.
Aye.
Starr.
Aye.
Jaeger.
Aye.
Friesman.
Aye.
Oh, excuse me. May I back up? I abstain from that.
A little bit late, I don't think.
Well, I backed it up. Okay, item, uh, 9B, consider resolution 10115, set in date for public hearing, an ordinance, 1086.
Yes, well, the staff is recommending that a public hearing is held, and the second reading be considered at the September 8 council meeting. Following that, then the third and final reading be held, um, can be completed on the September 21st meeting with the adoption of the ordinance. So we'd recommend approval of resolution 101-15, setting September 8th at 7:00 PM for the date and time for the public hearing, as well as authorize the city clerk to, uh, publish the notice for the hearing.
If I may, can we get, do we need that first reading? On the last one?
He's talking about it, yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay. I'm sorry. Excuse me, John, we've got to back up to the, to the, uh, other ordinance. We have to have a reading of ordinance 1086.
Ordinance number 1086, an ordinance amending the zoning ordinance of the city of Charles City, Iowa, to change the classification of a parcel of real property from R dash 2 general residence district to B dash 2 general business district.
Thank you, Delane.
Sorry about that.
Nope, no need.
I would so move to set the date of the public hearing.
No call?
Malero.
Aye.
Starr.
Aye.
Jaeger.
Aye.
Friesman.
Aye.
Hammond.
Aye.
Mr. Jaeger, you need to abstain from that or not? Do you want to abstain from that vote as well?
Yeah. Oh, yes, I do.
It's totally up to you, I don't care.
No, 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 I, I need to abstain from that all, all the way through. Okay, we're on 9C.
Yes, sir.
Consider motion to approve the removal of sidewalk abutting Matt Fryn's property. Discussion?
Yeah, Matt Fryn owns the property at the corner of Gilbert Street and South Jackson. Address is 900 Gilbert, Gilbert Street. And he's doing some work to the property, and he has made a request that the sidewalk, uh, that runs on the south side of the property, uh, that he be allowed to remove that. Typically, removal of existing sidewalk is not something that you encourage or want to do on a regular basis, but I think in this case, we feel it's justified. Uh, there's a side, the sidewalk that run, runs along that, uh, south side of the property there, dead ends at the, at the, I guess it'd be west end. Um, and then there's a sharp incline, uh, from there. So the likelihood of, of sidewalk being installed and connected to other existing sidewalk is, is, is very remote. So, uh, that being said, looking, looking at the improvements being done to the property and the, and the potential connection of that sidewalk to other sidewalk, um, we're recommending that the council use its discretion to allow removal of that public sidewalk on South Jackson Street.
Okay, and we talked about this at our last planning session, so I think the council's well aware of it. Uh, any questions, comments?
The two approaches on Gilbert and Jackson would stay, though. And it's just from the sidewalk, kind of on the north side, east, or whatever direction?
The sidewalk that, that runs parallel to Gilbert Street.
Is going to stay, right.
As well the, as well the approaches to the corner. It's just the sidewalk that runs from this, that way south.
You've got it all confused now, so.
Any other comments?
That way going up the hill to where it dead ends, that part of the sidewalk.
And that, that sidewalk itself, there is, the only portion that is actually there is, and just into their property, there is no, there is no further going to the other property, it's simply right, right there at their property.
And if there's a possibility to reasonably install a sidewalk from that point on, I'd be a little bit more reluctant to want to grant this, um, because you never, maybe that's, once sidewalk leaves, it's hard to get it back.
It's a sidewalk to a dead end going up the hill that nobody uses. But he's going to put a garage in there, and that'll be...
Yeah, he's doing some work in that area there, and...
Any other comments, questions?
So moved, your honor.
Second.
No call?
Starr.
Aye.
Jaeger.
Aye.
Friesman.
Aye.
Hammond.
Aye.
Malero.
Aye.
I can vote on that one.
You should get it.
Okay, item D, resolution considering 10215, approving the agreement with SEH for construction services in the First Avenue extension.
Well, SEH Incorporated, they're the engineering firm that's working with the school district for the, uh, civil engineering site services for the new middle school. And we've been working with the school district to also incorporate as part of their project the extension of First Avenue between L Street and Park Avenue. Uh, that, the construction work has been let. Uh, McKinnis, McKinnis Excalating, they'll be doing the grading work and the storm sewer work for the First Avenue, uh, extension, and Allied Manats, they'll do, be doing the paving. And what, uh, this proposal is for, is for, uh, the construction administration services for, uh, SEH to, uh, be onsite to, uh, observe the grading, storm sewer work, um, fine, uh, paving, as well as, uh, grading seating, creating a punch list and doing a final inspection and, uh, providing a, uh, a letter of completion and acceptance for the city council at the end of the construction. Uh, the cost for this would be a not to exceed fee of $14,600, so we recommend approval of resolution 102-15 approving this agreement.
Discussion?
SEH has served in this capacity for the city before, correct?
Yes.
On other projects we've had, so...
SEH is the former Yehi Colby Associates.
Right. I would so move.
Second.
No call?
Jaeger.
Aye.
Friesman.
Aye.
Hammond.
Aye.
Malero.
Aye.
Starr.
Aye.
Okay, item E, consider resolution 10315, approving installation of furnace and AC unit at 401 North Main. Discussion?
Yeah, when we acquired the building at 401 North Main this last winter, um, we developed a series of punch list items or replacement items to do over the next 20 to 25 years for the building. And, and one of the, one of the initial needs, um, that was very apparent was the heating and air conditioning. It's just, it's, it's past its useful life, and, uh, they're continually doing, uh, spot repairs and, and regular maintenance on it. So, uh, we obtained some quotes, um, earlier this, this, uh, the spring from Mills and McGage, um, on furnace and air conditioning replacement units. And, um, we basically got, uh, a quote from Mills for 110,000 BTU furnace, and a quote from McGage for 135 BTU furnace, and essentially they were the same price. It was only, uh, just under $300 more to go with, go with the larger, uh, more efficient furnace. And that was priced at 17,0916, that being for two furnaces and the two air conditioning units. Air conditioning units were, were the same between Gage and Mills. Um, once, once we looked, uh, looked at that 135 BTU unit, um, and through our energy efficiency audit that we've been working through with the state, we, we looked at a, at a higher efficiency, um, 96% efficient as opposed to 95% efficient, so basically we are looking at a total, total installed cost of 21,592 and 76 cents. Uh, it's approximately just under $3,700 more for the more efficient unit, but we feel that it's going to run more effi, more effectively and be cheaper to run. And over the cost of 15 years, it'll be an extra, I figured, $20 a month for that unit, which we'll more than save for it in operation, so. We budgeted an even $20,000, so we were pretty close. Uh, but the, the, and, the total installed price is going to be 21,592.76, and then after rebates, it'll be 14,542. So we save, uh, just over $7,000 in rebates, uh, with those units, so, uh, I ask that the council approve, uh, the bid from McGage for 21,592.76.
Thank you, Steve. For, for reality check, this is the, the building the chamber now occupies with adjacent Charles Cedar. The building was donated to us, and we knew the furnace AC was going to need some help, so it's a good investment on our part, because, uh, we have no cost in the building. Any other comments?
That's, by changing to the more efficient furnace and everything, we're still okay with our bid process? I just want to make sure of that.
Yeah, I mean, that really doesn't come into play at this level.
Okay. I just want to make sure, I just always concerned about making sure we follow the, the requirements there, so...
Well, it's, it's nice they're both local companies, but it's, it's, yeah, make sure that it's, it's a fair process.
I'd so move.
Second.
No call?
Friesman.
Aye.
Hammond.
Aye.
Malero.
Aye.
Starr.
Aye.
Jaeger.
Aye. Item F, consider resolution 104-15, approving preliminary plans, specs, and setting the date for letting in public hearing of 2015 PCC paving and water main project. Steve, or John, whoever?
Yes, this, this resolution approves preliminary plans and specifications for the 2015 PCC paving and water main repairs project, also set September 3rd as the, uh, bid date, and September 8th as the date for the public hearing on the final plans and specifications. As part of our leak detection program for our water system, leaks were detected on Kelly Street between Illinois and Howard on the water main in, in that block, as well as on the water main at the intersection of, uh, South Main Street and 4th Street. These, uh, leaking water mains will be replaced, and then the, uh, concrete pavement will be, uh, replaced. Also, as part of this project, we have some, uh, concrete streets that need to be, uh, repaired as well. There's some settled areas on Boulder Avenue, that's down by Hog Slats on the south, south side of, uh, town, as well as on Park Avenue, south of, uh, First Avenue. Uh, we also have some, few areas over in the, uh, city-owned parking lots, there by First Security and Hy-Vee. So, um, we'd recommend approval of resolution 104-15, setting these dates for the, um, this, uh, city project.
Discussion?
And how are we paying for it, John?
It'd be through the water fund and through, uh, local option sales tax.
So the water fund takes care of the mains, and the paving actually comes out of the...
Local option.
Lost, running.
I understand, standing that the losses of water from these leaks have been humongous. I mean, like 20,000 gallons a month or something like that in some cases?
Well, that fir, that first one we found, was about a little over quarter size and diameter, and that was estimated to be 30,000 gallons a day.
A day? Oh, wow. And that, that water goes down, it's not coming up, bubbling up in the street?
Unfortunately, right, yes. Took longer to find it. I'm, probably started off this small pinhole leak, and just over time grew.
And that's all treated water after we've run it through our plant?
It's, yeah, it's all clean drinking water, it's just going right, you know, draining that.
Send some of that out to California.
Do we have, uh, are we doing any further, uh, scanning, or has that been completed?
We do. We, we surveyed the entire town this spring, and so we had, we have a, um, a list that we're working off of, from worst to, to, to least, and, uh, so...
Good.
It's been, I mean, I think, I think, we paid, we paid for the cost of having that survey done by finding that first one.
Yeah, right.
Hundreds of thousands of dollars of, of water being lost a year there, so...
Good thing to continue with.
Any other comments?
So moved, your honor.
Second.
No call?
Hammond.
Aye.
Malero.
Aye.
Starr.
Aye.
Jaeger.
Aye.
Friesman.
Aye.
Item G, consider resolution 10515, approving bond purchase agreement, authorizing and approving a loan sell, a loan agreement, authorizing the call of bonds, providing the issuance of $2.2 million in GO, uh, water improvement and refunding bonds, Series 2015A, and providing for the levy of taxes to pay the same. Oops, excuse me, discussion?
Yeah, we, uh, worked on, uh, pricing out the bonds today. Paul Donahue's here from, from Barrett, and can kind of walk us through today's events and where we're at, and I, I gave everybody a, a copy of a summary there.
Welcome, Paul.
Good evening, mayor and council. Um, the, the summary that I'd like to go through with you tonight, um, will compare where we started, um, and where we ended with, uh, the pricing of the bonds. But first, I want to touch on the, um, since I was here last and, and, um, prior to pricing the bonds, you applied for a credit rating to Moody's Investor Service. Your A1 outstanding rating was affirmed. The, um, the conference call that, uh, Stephen had with, um, Moody's, um, a little over a week ago, um, well, it was a week ago, where Steve presented the city's credit profile, answered any questions that they had, uh, based on, um, uh, any outstanding questions they had on the documents that were submitted. Basically, was able to present to them information about, uh, certainly developments that you can't necessarily glean from the documents that they're reading, what's, what's happening in the city, uh, development-wise, uh, as far as tax base, expanding that tax base. Also touched on the policies that you currently have in place. Uh, the A1 was affirmed, um, through their committee process. A summary of the report, basically what's substantiating the A1 rating is, really, everything that you have under your control, you receive very high marks for. Um, your, uh, debt profile, um, your debt ratios are relatively low when you compare an A1, with your city with other cities across the nation, um, as well as, um, the liquidity that you've got in place, uh, your, basically your reserve funds. Um, that is a significant positive credit factor that they recognize, gives you great flexibility, uh, to manage your budgets going forward. Um, the, the, well, what they phrase as weaknesses in the credit is really, um, you've got a relatively small and concentrated tax base when you compare yourself to cities, not only in Iowa, but again, across the country. Um, and also socio-economic profile, basically, you're, the income levels when you compare to cities your size across the country are a little, um, um, lower than other A1s. Um, but altogether, like they said in the report, basically what you have under your control, you have, you receive very high marks. The next step in the rating would be a, a brand-new category, which is double A. So you're in the A category, you're on the very high end of that category, being rated A1. The next step is a double A category, which has double A 3, 2, and 1 in that category. Uh, and really, I think, to get there, the dynamics of the city would really change with an expansion of your tax base significantly and basically greater wealth level. So, um, uh, you don't see too many double A communities of this size across the country, so, a very good rating. Any questions I can answer on that process or the evaluation that they made? No? Okay, so, then I'll get, talk about the, um, the pricing process. Pull up my phone here again as I look at it online. Um, that summary that we sent out, uh, shows you where we started, which is basically back in, in mid, um, mid-July, and where we ended, um, earlier this afternoon. Pricing started this morning, uh, in earnest at about 8:30 in the morning. Um, we went out with a, a proposed structure that, uh, was, um, approved and evaluated not only by the city, but also by, uh, we, the city had hired an independent evaluation to be participants in that pricing process. Uh, Piper Jaffrey was participating, so they approved that based on current market conditions and other comparables. Uh, and throughout the morning, basically getting, gathering interest and feedback from the bond buyers throughout. Tweaks had to be made in order to get the bonds, um, sold at a level to where we were comfortable underwriting. Um, and you can see that the final, where we started out at a true interest cost of a 2.45%, we ended up at a 2.48%. So three basis points difference from starting out this morning to where we thought we were going to hope to be compared to where we ultimately ended up. All except the first maturity, again, it's a 15-year structure, all except the first maturity went to bond buyers in Iowa. Uh, banks, um, and trust departments throughout the state participated in the, in the offering. Um, I believe the outlier was a trust department out of Chicago that purchased some of the bonds. So, um, it was shown throughout the Midwest and, you know, throughout our network, which is actually across the country, but, uh, you typically start here and move out, because that's where you get the best pricing, and that's what happened. So, I'll certainly answer any questions that you've got on the pricing or the process going forward, and, um...
What was the rate of the bonds that were refinancing approximately? What level? The ones that we were buying out?
Uh, those were at a 3, a 3.25%.
I don't think so.
And that was through a state, a low-interest state loan, which was low at the time.
Just for general information, we started with Paul several years ago when Tom Brownlow was here, reducing with the prime rate going down to zero, we, we reduced a lot of bonds. And this particular bond that Steve was working on with you, um, reduced significantly, and this particular bond's going to save the city about $99,000, even after we pay your minute fee.
Yeah. [laughing]
It's down to about 76 now, instead of 99, but it's still a good savings.
Well, it's a good savings.
Yeah.
No, I'm kidding you, Paul, but, but I think, I think the point is, the, the city's been aggressive on refinancing as we've gone through this stage of life and getting, and it saves the city a lot of money. I haven't looked back, but it's probably saved us, uh, five, six, $700,000 over the last four or five years by reducing our bond, uh, by refinancing our bonds. And you've been an instrumental part of it, and we thank you for it.
The city has been very proactive in managing the debt.
Any other questions?
If I could, Mr. Mayor, make one comment. Um, I believe the resolution, the actual documents inside that resolution, um, you're, you started out at 2.2 as the estimate that you were going to issue, and we, um, actually you end up issuing 2,125,000, and that's a factor of how the bonds were priced. Uh, and real quickly, uh, bondholders, bond buyers out there are demanding a premium, or they're, they're actually paying you a premium to buy the bonds. Um, you pay a slightly higher rate, but they're paying a premium to buy it for you, so we grab that premium and we, we use it to reduce your principal amount, so the impact is, is zero. Um, that's why you're borrowing actually less principal, uh, than what you started, because of that premium concept. Everyone's betting that rates are going up, and so they need that premium to trade the bonds in the future. So, 2,125 is the number that should be, um, referenced throughout those documents.
It's in the resolution, too.
Yep.
In our case, China's held that rate down for another quarter, maybe.
Let's hope so.
Any other questions? We have a motion?
Yep.
In our case, China's held that rate down for another quarter, maybe.
Let's hope so.
Any other questions? We have a motion?
So moved, Your Honor.
Second.
Roll call?
Malero.
Aye.
Starr.
Aye.
Jaeger.
Aye.
Friesman.
Aye.
Hammond.
Aye.
Okay, item H, 9H.
And Jerry, we'll have to, before you leave, I need to get you to sign off on that.
Pardon me?
Yeah, he did. I, he signed.
Never mind.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Paul.
Got it. Thanks, Paul.
Thanks, Paul. We're ready to go, 9H.
We are ready to go.
9H, consider a motion to approve sale of the building at Shaw Avenue. This is another major real estate transaction.
One after another. This one here, we have, there's a little building, I keep calling it the guard shack, because I think it was a guard shack, but out there by our dump area, right next to where you dump off the grass clippings, there's a little, probably eight-by-eight, little shed that we no longer use, and somebody had expressed interest to the street department about purchasing that building, so what we did, we, so we advertised it, and we actually received three bids, which we opened earlier today, and Trudy can read off the winning bid there, I suppose.
Oh, I don't have it with me. $280 was the winning bid.
Yeah, it was $280. Received three bids, so.
Mm-hmm, that was the winning one.
Do we have any other buildings to sell?
Yeah, city hall.
Not yet.
Okay, so we need a motion to sell that for $280, is that right?
Yes.
So moved.
That bid? Who won the bid? And oddly enough, the person that had shown interest in it was not the winning bid. So, that's how it works.
Sometimes happens.
Second.
That's why you bid it out.
That's why you bid it out.
Roll call?
Starr.
Aye.
Jaeger.
Aye.
Friesman.
Aye.
Hammond.
Aye.
Item 99, consider motion pertaining to request from Charles City Schools on storm sewer for the new bus barn project. John, Steve?
Yeah, we talked about this request at length at our workshop. Essentially, the part of the development, redevelopment that the school is looking at for the bus barn area was going to be, requires installation or taking care of the storm sewer, or the storm water coming off the property, and in this case, there's no real close adjacent storm sewer. So the closest connection would be about a block away to an existing storm sewer main, and so there's a proposed cost of about $40,000 to install storm sewer, to get it up close enough to the property where the school would connect. The school has requested that the city assist in that cost. As we discussed and as I've laid out, you know, that's probably not something that we would want to do. That goes against our, you know, anytime there's an extension of service line or main, that's the cost of the developer, and the school in this case would be the developer. If they would like to pursue that option, install it, the city, you know, the city would take over maintenance of that main, obviously, but when it comes to installation, that should remain the cost of the developer. And so, just to follow up from our consensus from our workshop the other night, we just need the council to make a motion to deny that request from the school for participating in costs associated with installation of the storm sewer.
Thanks, Steve. I think I'd like to mention that we've been working with the school quite a bit in the last year on numerous different projects, and we've given some concessions and some we don't feel we can give. And this is, this one would be very precedent-setting, that if we did this, why then it's going to go down the road and hurt us real bad, I think, so...
I think we'd have a number of requests.
Yeah, I think we've been very cooperative, school, and we will tend to be as much as we can as they go through their financial struggles on it, but I agree that we cannot, should deny this one. Any other comments?
I would so move to deny this.
Second.
Roll call?
Jaeger.
Aye.
Friesman.
Aye.
Hammond.
Aye.
Malero.
Aye.
Starr.
Aye.
Okay, item 10, other business, miscellaneous correspondence.
Done, Your Honor.
Brad, welcome to have you tonight. I hope you don't have more than an hour and a half dissertation, but we have attorney's report.
I don't have anything to report tonight.
Ah, boy.
Ralph trained you well, didn't he?
You're a little longer than Ralph, but that's okay. Oh, here we go, city clerk's report.
I know, I always have something to say. Our next planning session, next meeting will be August 24th at 7:00. It'll be a planning session, and just a reminder that our first meeting in September will be Tuesday, September 8th, due to Labor Day being on Monday.
Planning sessions at 7:00?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Is that it?
Mm-hmm.
My gosh, that's pretty brief.
I know.
City administrators' report.
I just want to mention that Wednesday, this Wednesday night's the fifth and final meeting for the advisory task force, looking at the joint facilities ideas, so anybody that has any interest or would like to attend, the public is certainly welcome to kind of see what options are kind of coming together out there, so.
I wouldn't know to that meeting, the final the other night over there, and it's kind of interesting what they're coming up with, so.
Hopefully, I mean, obviously, gain some direction out of this, so. That's all I had to report.
Any board, commission, committee reports? You need a motion to adjourn?